Live on Zoom. Thank you. Welcome to tonight's special meeting, closed session and regular meeting of the council. We will have, we'll hold public comments now. Actually, town attorney Catherine Engberg is going to read some statements regarding the remote participation in this session.
Great, thank you. Yeah, so prior to oral communications, there are a few things we're going to clarify for the record. I wanted to note that council member Wernikoff is participating remotely pursuant to section 54953B, the California Government Code. She is participating from the Woods Hole Inn in Woods Hole, Massachusetts. She has participated by Zoom webinar. In accordance with the Brown Act, each teleconference location has been identified in the, in the agenda for this meeting. I also want to note for the record that we have a forum of council members here in person. Now I wanted to request that council member Wernikoff respond to the following questions, just to confirm some matters for the record. First, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Were you able to hear the proceedings on this end up until now?
Yes.
Great. And do you have a copy of the agenda for this meeting?
Yes.
And have you posted the agenda at the location where you are?
Yes.
Great. And is your location reasonably accessible to the public such that any member of the public could participate in this, in this teleconference from your location if he or she wished to do so?
Yes.
And is there any member of the public with you, with, there with you now?
No.
Okay, great. I want to now ask that any members of the council speak up at this time if the council, if you have not been able to hear. Councilor Wernikoff? Nope. Okay, so seeing no comments, concerns. The record will reflect that all councilors present have indicated that they were able to hear Councilor Wernikoff clearly. And, well, this won't be really necessarily relevant, but I want to advise the council that any votes taken during teleconference portion of this meeting will be taken by, must be taken by roll call. So we can go ahead and proceed with oral communications and then I will advise Councilor Wernikoff, of course, once that's concluded, you can go ahead and close your hotel room door for the closed session portion. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Catherine. There are currently no members of the public in attendance, so I'm assuming there will be no oral communication to this point. In which case, we are good to close the session, close the meeting and move to closed session. Thank you.
The mayor has the mayor has a personal conflict and so I will be chairing the meeting in his absence. I wanted to first start, is Jennifer in the room?
Yes.
I wanted to first start by welcoming our new town clerk, Jennifer Torres. This is her first meeting as part of, part of the Portola Valley community, so just wanted to offer you, Jennifer, a warm welcome on behalf of the council.
Thank you very much.
Um, just for the record, do you want to just give us the background of where you come from?
I actually came from the city of Rio Vista. I worked there for almost eight years. And I served in a couple of different roles, but I was a Public Safety Support Manager as well as a Deputy City Park Care. Thank you.
And I think our first item of business is a report out of the closed session and Catherine, would you be handling that?
I'm actually going to suggest that we first go through the teleconference procedure since you're appearing teleconference.
Okay, correct. Thank you.
And then we'll go through the agenda. First will be oral communications and then the second will be report out of closed session. Okay. So for, for the record, as you see, Vice Mayor Wernikoff is appearing by teleconference pursuant to Brown Act, Government Code Section 54953B. Councilor Wernikoff is participating from Woods Hole Inn in Woods Hole, Massachusetts. And I wanted to note for the record that each teleconference location, well, this, her teleconference location has been identified in the agenda for this meeting. And also note that we do have a quorum of council members who are present in person tonight. So I'm going to go through just a series of questions for Vice Mayor Wernikoff to confirm that all of the requirements of the Brown Act are met. So first, can you, can you hear me well?
Yes, I can.
Okay, great. And have you been able to hear the proceedings on this end up until now?
Yes.
Great. Do you have a copy of the agenda for the meeting?
Yes, I do.
Great. And have you posted the agenda at the location where you are?
Yes, I have.
Okay, great. And is your location reasonably accessible to the public such that any member of the public could participate in this teleconference from your location if he or she wished to do so?
Yes.
Great. And is there any member of the public there with you now?
No.
Okay. So now I'd like to ask the council members here who are present to speak up if, if you've not been able to clearly hear Vice Mayor Wernikoff.
We can hear you.
Great. So I'll note that for the record that you can all hear Vice Mayor Wernikoff clearly. And now I just do want to advise the council that because we're in this teleconference, teleconference procedures, that all votes taken tonight do need to be done by roll call. Actually, that'll be, that'll be on you, Vice Mayor Wernikoff, until we leave chair in the meeting tonight. All votes will need to be by roll call. All right. So with that all done, you can go ahead and proceed with the next item of business. Actually, I think that Howard, our interim town manager, does have one announcement just about the agenda before we move on to oral communications.
Do we? Go ahead.
I just wanted to note that concerning the housing element post adoption plan by the subcommittee, that it was planned to be brought forth at this meeting, but had to be rescheduled currently for the August 9th council meeting due to overall agenda management and schedules. Thank you.
Thank you, Howard. And do we also have to call the role of the council members?
Yes.
Councilmember Hufdi? Here. Councilmember Haskell? Here. Councilmember Taylor?
Present.
Vice Mayor Wernikoff?
Present.
We have a quorum. Mayor Alfson's absent.
Thank you. And then Catherine, would you like me to do the report of the closed session or oral communications first? I didn't know what was appropriate.
The next item I want to do is oral communications.
Okay. We'll go to oral communications. I do see one hand raised. Rita Comas?
Hi. I want to thank you for having this. It's timely, but it's a way overdue topic on the agenda for tonight. And I just wanted to point out that when, you know, I know there was a closed session that started at 5:30 and then there's this session. And in previous weeks, there's been also, I think it was on the, what, the 27th, there was a closed session at one time and then a session for, you know, the public to be part of it at 7:00 PM. But when the public tries to then sign on earlier, we just get blocked to say that there's no meeting. And I have talked to several residents that then said that they thought that they couldn't get in and then they did not join the 7:00 PM meeting. I just hope that perhaps in the future, it's broken into two sessions so that the public can then get in. I mean, I was trying to get in even at, you know, 6:59 tonight and was blocked from getting in. So perhaps if there were two Zoom numbers, residents, some of them are not as internet savvy and, and a little bit discouraged, could then wait to get in rather than keep trying until after 7:00 PM to get in. But thank you once again for having this very timely and way overdue topic on tonight's agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. I do not see any other hands raised here for oral communications.
There's someone in the
Oh, somebody in the hall. Thank you.
If it works, if it works.
Now you can hear me? I'm Ellen Bernaza and I just wanted to address the council on the process that you'll be going through to choose a town manager. And I just, you know, just reading on the website and it says, according to the town website, the town manager and department heads are supposed to be the chief advisors to the town council on policy options concerning the organization and activities of the departments under their supervision. Unfortunately, this declaration has been highly disregarded over the last number of years. I am requesting that you choose to hire a town manager, that as you choose to hire a town manager, you choose someone who recognizes that his or her job is that of an advisor to the town council for its decision making and not consider his or herself the ultimate decision maker on town policy. And that, and that they recognize that they are to give all options for your decision making, not only those options that concur with their agenda. I would hope that you would choose a manager this time who will work well and listen to the committee heads, not disrespecting the committee's carefully rendered work and always report to you, the town council, all committee recommendations for your consideration and decision making. Many people have left the committees over the last number of years due to the disrespect and disregard from the town manager. There are many smart people in town who have the ability to and are willing to work to get the accurate and important data to you. This can only work with a competent town manager who respects, utilizes and forwards the committee's input to you. The latest election demonstrated the discontent of the majority of the voters in town regarding how Portola Valley had been being run. I would ask that as you regroup, you choose a manager who will respect the residents and the town of Portola Valley being a small wooey town and not attempt to manage and run it like an urban city. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Ellen. Are there any other hands raised there in the hall?
No.
And I don't see any on Zoom. So with that, I will close the oral, oral communications and we can move on to the consent agenda.
I'm sorry, this is actually a report out of closed session item.
Oh, sorry. I apologize.
No, no problem. The council had been closed session prior to this meeting to discuss the town manager and the town manager recruitment. The, the council took no reportable action at tonight's meeting. Nothing to report out of closed session.
Thank you, Catherine.
Is it appropriate to ask that the minutes reflect the public comment?
They'll reflect it just as they always do, that we did have a public comment.
There's not going to say what the nature of the
No, we do not.
But it is recorded.
It is.
Is it appropriate at this point to move on to the consent agenda? I can't see what's going on in the, in the hall there, so I just wanted to check in.
Nothing going on.
Okay. Okay. We will move on to the consent agenda. The following items are voted on at once by the body unless a member of the, of the body requests an item to be considered separately. Members of the public are permitted to comment on any item on the consent calendar before the body votes on the consent agenda. And so with that, I would want to take any public comment on consent agenda items.
So there are no hands in here.
Thank you very much. I don't see anything on Zoom either, so I will assume there are no public comments. Does anybody on the council want to pull an item on the consent agenda?
No, nothing, I think, nothing here.
Thank you very much. And so would, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
So we'll call the roll. Councilmember Hufdi?
Aye.
Councilmember Haskell?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wernikoff?
Aye.
Motion, Karen.
Thank you. And then we can move on to the irregular agenda item, which tonight is the study session to consider the electronics communication policy.
Thank you. I'll be presenting this item tonight. I do have some slides that our clerk is pulling up. While she's doing that, I'll just introduce this item to note that this is a study session, an opportunity for council to review some topics that are raised in electronic communications policies. I provided some sample policies from other Bay Area jurisdictions to provide some feedback, decided this, is this something the council wants to do? Would it make sense to have a standalone policy versus are any of these topics that are addressed in existing policies? It provides some feedback and then come back with, to council with a proposal. And I'll just note that so many, if not all of these topics that are involved in electronic communications policies are administered by the town clerk. So now that we have a town clerk, this is an appropriate opportunity for us to work together on this. That's another reason I'm proposing sort of a two-step process so that we can sync up with the work of the town clerk and then also potentially the work of some of our York ad hoc subcommittees. So the, the council has appointed an ad hoc subcommittee to look at code of conduct, code of ethics. There might be some connection there as well as look at our committee structure. And of course, there is a committee handbook that addresses all sorts of procedures, but doesn't have a lot on the topic of electronic communications. So this would be an opportunity to sort of sync up with that work as well. So in terms of sort of genesis of this, there have been questions raised in the community about the use of social media by town officials. In addition, the town routinely receives Public Records Act requests that oftentimes request, you know, electronic communications, emails, texts, social media posts, that kind of thing. So it can be helpful to have a policy that governs that. In addition, I, I know that I didn't put this in my staff report, I just, I just noticed it recently that the town also does have a social media site, I believe on Instagram, maybe some other ones as well. So it is helpful to have policies that address posting on town social media as well as moderating those sites in the event that there are post comments that are made that are not appropriate. So for any, for all those reasons, a lot of cities and towns do, do consider electronic communications policies. All right. So next slide. All right. So electronic communications, what are we talking about? Typically email, texting and social media. Those are sort of the three. As you know, just in terms of background, in August of last year, the council adopted a texting policy that applies to public meetings. This was connected to settlement of litigation. But it's a policy that applies to the council and city committee and commission, it's all the Brown Act bodies that prohibits texting and emailing among the committee and council members. Does not prohibit, and it's only during the public meeting itself as opposed to at other times. And does have some exceptions with a family emergency, that kind of thing. And it's okay to text, remember the public. But generally, it's, it's, it's strictly about texting and emailing during the meeting. Electronic communication policies can help clarify Brown Act issues, Public Records Act issues, and then the related topic of records retention. Back on that, I will just have a couple of slides on Brown Act and I know you're all familiar with it and you've had your trainings, but just to sort of get everyone on the same page. Brown Act does cover meetings, have notice and agenda requirements for meetings. And a meeting is of course any gathering of a majority of members of the body to hear, discuss, deliberate or take action on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of that body. So that of course needs to happen at notice public meetings and, but can inadvertently happen, of course, when you have three members of a five-member body, you know, meet up at a coffee shop and start talking about a proposed development in town. That can, you know, lead to a potential Brown Act issue because the meeting was not noticed and open to the, to the public. So that of course can also happen in the, you know, in the electronic space as well. And that's what these are intended to address. My next slide. All right. So in terms of what type of Brown Act issues come up, situations where, you know, you have in the email context, generally, we try to avoid replying all because that can by amongst members of a legislative body, because that can lead to a Brown Act violation. In addition, with social media, posts on social media, particularly when they are replied to or liked or hearted, that can lead to a discussion that could be a serial meeting. Recently, I guess in 2020, the legislature did attempt to add some clarity to this. Before 2020, I think generally the, the, the common sense was that, well, if you post on social media, just, you know, be careful. And if you, and generally try not to reply to, to posts by your colleagues on a unelected or appointed body. And AB 992 generally just clarified that. I'd say it didn't really surprise anyone in terms of what it prohibits, which is prohibiting members from discussing public business amongst themselves outside of a notice public meeting via social media. It does clarify that it is okay for members to use social media to answer questions and provide information to the, to their constituents, to the public. Next slide. All right. So there's also, of course, Public Records Act and record retention implications for, for electronic communications. As, as you know, your emails and your texts and your social media posts that are about city business are likely public records. And as such, the general practice of, of cities and I, and here as well, is that city council members, town council members use their town email for town business. And then generally try to refrain from using personal devices, text, that kind of thing for communications regarding town business. However, if, you know, we do receive a Public Records Act request, we, the clerk will generally ask you for, you know, to provide copies of any texts, emails that were on your private devices. But it is helpful to have a policy that says that council members use their council email for, for town business. That way, when we get the Public Records Act request, we can presume that you do that and don't need to, you know, have, you know, have you dig into your personal, personal email. That's about all I wanted to say about that. All right. So to sort of get our, our creative juices flowing, I did attach three policies to this staff report. There are many, many, many in, in California. But I chose, chose three, it's mostly on geographic proximity. So Saratoga has an electronic communications policy that covers emailing, texting and social media. It does have a definition of social media that tracks language in the AB 992 that I, that I mentioned. It only applies to Brown Act bodies. It does not apply to staff because that's really what it's geared towards. It's geared towards ensuring, you know, Brown Act compliance by the Brown Act, by the, by the Brown Act bodies as well as ensuring that Public Records Act requests are complied with by elected and appointed officials. It, it states the policy that the, the city of Saratoga email account should be used for official business. And it has procedures to respond to care requests for electronic communications. One issue that comes up generally is that while elected council members are provided a city or town email address, generally speaking, committee and commission members are not, so they generally use their personal email to conduct their, their business. So in the case of Saratoga, they have a staff liaison for each of their committee and commissions. And so their policy says that when a committee member emails, they need to copy that staff liaison to make sure that the public record is, is made. I will note that that's not the case in Portola Valley. So you know, that, that, that particular policy may not apply, but rather I suspect what, what we do here is what we've been doing in the past, which is basically asking folks to, you know, provide their, their emails from their personal email accounts. Anyway, so that's, that's one issue that that one addresses. The policy also just sort of states per state law, you need to avoid in electronic communication by quorum of, of members of a Brown Act body. And then there's a, this is actually kind of interesting. The last bullet here is a notes that Saratoga's policy actually goes beyond, I would say, what your texting policy does. It prohibits councilors and commissioners from using electronic communication during meetings, period. There's an exception for a family emergency, but that's basically it. So that goes kind of above and, above and beyond. And that's, I think, most of what I wanted to highlight about, about that Saratoga policy. My, my firm does serve a city attorney in Saratoga, but I do not have any pride of authorship on, on their policy. All right. Next slide, please. All right. Some Los Gatos. So this one is really geared towards social media. And Los Gatos has social media sites. I don't, I haven't actually checked them out, but they probably have Facebook, Instagram, that kind of thing. And so much of the policy is actually geared towards who is authorized to post on their social media sites. And then it has provisions regarding content moderation and what types of posts, you know, fall into the, the category of, of speech that is not protected by the First Amendment. You know, profane language, content, you know, promoting discrimination, that these kinds of things may be removed by the staff member in charge of, of the social media site. And I'll say that is actually important to have that in a policy to guide, to guide staff in terms of what, you know, what content may be, may be removed per First Amendment rules. So that's Los Gatos. And then they also have sort of generally tracking state law, you know, provisions prohibiting, you know, communication among elected and appointed officials on social media sites. And that's pretty much, you know, standard per state law and, and the Brown Act. They have also some details about elected and appointed officials who have their own social media sites, which I presume several folks in Los Gatos do, so they wanted to have a policy that, that governs that situation. I think that's what I all wanted to do about Los Gatos. Let's go to the next one. So San Jose, this one, I would say, maybe a little bit more bureaucratic. It covered all forms of e-communication, but it doesn't really comprehensively address social media. It applies to both Brown Act bodies and to staff as well. I would say sort of the thrust of this policy was, you know, making sure that folks do not use city email or equipment for personal, you know, use. Really, you've got to use, you know, use the city equipment and email for, for official, for city purposes. And they also have provisions in there for records retention as well as provisions regarding intellectual property and security and, and privacy. That was, that was San Jose's policy. I will say one more thing about San Jose, it's kind of just interesting because we're on a topic. San Jose was the, the jurisdiction that had a case that went all the way up to the California Supreme Court about texting and whether texts received on personal devices were in fact public records that need to be disclosed under the Public Records Act. And so that was the case that just determined that yes, in fact, as long as the text is about city business, it doesn't matter if it's received on your personal device or on a city device, it is still a public record. That's, I think, all I wanted to say about San Jose. This is just a, a little matrix to sort of summarize the three policies. Again, this is just the tip of the iceberg. There are plenty of, plenty of other policies out there. But I thought this was sort of a good range of, of different topics that were addressed in three different cities. Let's go to the next slide, actually. All right. So I tried to think about some policy questions to sort of direct, help direct the, the conversation and, and help you direct, give, give staff some, some direction as well. So, you know, one question is not even on here, but I guess the question, the threshold question is, do we want, you know, is this helpful to have these topics addressed in either, you know, a standalone electronic communications policy or to weave them into other policies? Like the Commission Committee Handbook? Or, you know, an upcoming draft of the Code of Or, you know, an upcoming draft of, of the Code of Conduct? So that's one sort of threshold question. Just, it's not predetermined that, you know, I don't want to sound like I'm imposing this on you. That's something to consider. So if, if it is helpful to have such a policy, what should it cover? Should it cover social media only, such as the Los Gatos one? Or do we want to, you know, cover all forms of, of electronic communication? The second policy question I, I threw out here was, should the policy apply on Brown Act bodies or should it also apply to staff? Some have said this isn't relevant to staff. The staff isn't subject to the Brown Act. So really, the, the key things would be, you know, requiring staff to use, you know, town email only for, for town business, which I, I don't think we have a concern with, but I, but that's kind of the, the main thing that may, and it may even be said in other places. So I, I, I don't think that's a, a really a concern, but that, that is one topic. Otherwise, a lot of the stuff isn't that, that as relevant to staff. Okay, next, next slide. Okay. So I also just wanted to note that, that the Saratoga and, and Los Gatos policies define social media differently, though I think in practice they probably operate roughly the same. The definition in the Los Gatos policy refers to social media and it sort of gives, it gives examples such as Nextdoor, Facebook, Instagram, et cetera. The Saratoga policy really tracks the language of AB 992, which doesn't include moderated sites. And, and moderate sites would be ones that would actually require a permission to, to be part of that. And I understand that Nextdoor and PV Forum are both examples of moderated sites. So I'll just note that. And in terms of, of why that is the case, my understanding in Saratoga is that their, their council members don't like posting on Nextdoor and they didn't want to feel like they needed to. So I think that might have been one of the reasons that they went with the AB 992 language. But, you know, generally speaking, I would say that, you know, the key principle here, in terms of the Brown Act compliance, is to ensure that you don't have, you know, two or more council numbers posting, posting, you know, post, commenting on a post. So that, that's really what you want to, want to try to avoid, kind of regardless of the definition of social media. That is the key Brown Act consideration. Next question I hear, have here is this kind of more of a logistics question, but just, I just wanted to flag that because of the number of committees and we don't have staff liaisons for the committees, there is the potential, and I haven't really been here long enough to know how many public records actually get for, for electronic communications by committee members. But just note, you know, that this is something that the clerk, you know, if, if such a request is received, that we will need to ask folks, you know, to get through their personal email and, and potentially their texts to, to respond to those PRA requests. And then fifth, maintain texting policy. I should have actually meant, I, actually what I meant there was maintain or expand. I think obviously you need to maintain it, keep it, because it is a part of settlement of a lawsuit. But, but at the same time, it could be, it could be expanded to look more like Saratoga's, which just prohibits texting and emailing during the meeting at all. And I'm not, I'm not advocating that. I did just want to note that that is, you know, a choice, could be a policy choice for, for the council. And I think that's it. Next, next slide, I think is just, yeah, did noting that that is the end of my presentation. So I'm happy to take any clarifying questions and then Vice Mayor hand it off to you for, for any public comment.
Thank you. Yeah. So let's start with questions from the council. Feel free to go in any order as you guys are sitting around there.
I had some pretty basic, I think we, we do have liaisons with every committee.
I will, I will defer to Howard or Cory.
I think it would be kind of lovely to have the chair, you know, the chairman would put their, put us on the list so that we could be part of the conversation and then become public record that way. So that was one question. The second question I had was.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Councilor. Did you mean there are council member liaisons to each committee? Okay. Yeah. And in some, in some cities, maybe a lot of cities, they have staff liaisons. And so that's what I was noting that here, we don't have staff liaisons, but there, there could be a choice made.
Become part of the public record and simplify it for them. And then they wouldn't, because I don't think anybody's ever been at a public request, like this request from a committee or commission. I don't think we were really aware of it before.
I don't think that's true.
Yeah, that has happened.
Okay. But I mean, it would be good to have somebody proactive on that. The other thing is, you know, it's pretty well understood that people can't do two things at once very well. If you're talking to somebody else or you're emailing somebody else for the meeting, it's, you're not really at the meeting.
We're in questions.
I mean, is, are we considering that as a, as that, was that the reason why that was done? Or was it just done because, why was it done in Saratoga?
You know, even though my firm serves the city attorney there, I was not part of that, of that discussion. So I can't say. I mean, I think that, that very well could be a reason that they decided, you know.
And, and then I guess my last clarifying question is, maybe not for you, but for, for staff, is I think many of the committees were surprised to discover their face on, on YouTube. Is there a, is there a process for telling people that they're being posted on YouTube by the town? It's a bit of an invasion of one's own privacy.
And just to clarify, are you talking about people that come and speak at the meeting being surprised or actual members of the committee being surprised?
We were unaware that we were being posted on, on YouTube.
As a committee or commission member?
So I guess, turning that into a question that kind of maybe is a little more black and white. Are there, as a public appointed or elected official, are you giving implied consent for those types of things or what legal construct do you know?
Well, I would say that some cities, well, not every city posts their videos on YouTube. Some just post them on the, you know, council or committee website. So that, and I, I don't have the background to, you know, why, you know, one way is done versus the other. So it, it may just need to be a notification thing when, you know, folks interview or, you know, apply for these positions. There may be a way to just make it more clear in those documents, the, the, the process. Yeah, I guess that would be my thought on, on the question.
So is this mostly clarification of the Brown Act and the Public Records Request Act? I mean, I, I hear a couple of things like social media posting guidelines, which probably aren't covered by either of those. Like, you know, what's appropriate to take down and stuff. But it felt to me like all the rest of it was really already a Brown Act or a PRA thing. And maybe it's not clear to people, but it, it is a thing. Is that, when we talk about this stuff, is this all pretty much under that, the Brown Act PRA umbrella with maybe a couple of exceptions?
Yes, I would say so. I'd say in terms of what, what you identified, the content moderation of town social media, that's, that's not part of state law. So that would be something that, you know, the town could, could and perhaps should clarify if the town seems to run a social media site. As far as the other ones, yes, generally clarifications of state law and perhaps its procedures about how to implement. So the, the topic of when you get a PRA for emails that are on a personal device, you know, what's the procedure there? Is it copying the liaison or is it just forwarding emails? And then, you know, to the extent that the council wants to go above and beyond state law, you know, there are opportunities in a policy to do that.
And then is the enforcement mechanism basically Brown Act or PRA enforcement? And the reason I'm asking is, you know, what happens if somebody doesn't comply? And certainly, I mean, like in our committees and stuff, I think the committee members don't even realize that, you know, they're subject to all their texts being requested. And I know we've had committees where people have been asked and I'm not sure that they've complied. And what I don't quite understand is, is there any consequence to that and, and what's that mechanism for enforcement?
Yeah. I mean, you know, in terms of, of enforcement, sort of the, you know, the town clerk, is it going to come over to your house and look at your, look at your computer? So, you know, a lot of this is honor code, but setting it out in the policy is helpful in terms of creating expectation. And then if it turns out you have, you know, you have a committee member that's just not producing their emails when they're asked to, well, then you, you might consider, you know, whether that person should continue to serve on the committee, for example. To make a decision at that point as a council member about, you know, whether they're following, you know, not only this policy, but other policies in the council.
Okay. So we, we could either put it into these kind of policies or we could put it into the committee handbook. I mean, there, there are places that we could sort of define what enforcement looked like. Okay. Cause I'm just, I'm trying to wrap my head around the committee part of this. Because I, well, I want to be careful. I'm, I'm starting to disappear into discussion. It was basically sort of how this applies to committees. And right now, because they're Brown Act committees, it's basically the same as what applies to council and applies to commissions, if I understand that correctly. Okay. And what about record retention? I, I know you sort of alluded to it here, but do we have a retention, record retention policy? Or does it go as part of this? Like where, where, where does, where does that get linked in?
Yeah. I'm gonna just check with Cory and Jennifer. My opinion is that if we have one, it, it needs to be updated. And that's on the, part of the work plan. Yes, we have one. I believe it's from 2016, if I'm correct. And we're working actually right now on updating it.
Okay. And I guess related that, again, I'm, I'm, I'm struggling with how it applies to committees. Does that mean that the Record Retention Act applies to committee members on their private email? So if we say you were going to tame things for two years and they put it in the trash and Google cleans it up after a month, that they've then violated the Record Retention Act?
I think we'll probably, we'll want to look at that. I mean, I, you know, I, one of the benefits of copying the, like in Saratoga's policy, you know, copying the staff liaison is then it is in the system.
In the, in the town system.
The town system. And so then if the policy says, we're gonna, you know, we have this rolling dump of emails every two years, then at that point, you know, the committee's emails would be in the system for, you know, a rolling two-year period.
Okay. So we, we might for the committees find a way of defining the appropriate PRA documents to make sure that they always get CCed either through a council liaison, through a staff liaison, through the clerk. Is, is that your proposal? That might be a way to approach that?
Yes, it is.
All right, fine. And then the last piece on this is, if my neighbor sends me an email and says, hey, what do you think about X, Y and Z? And I haven't responded to them, that, does my neighbor now get hooked into PRA? Because in theory, it was some town business. They asked me about the housing element?
So if they're asking you about town business
Right, like the housing.
And, and they're sending it to you in your capacity as a council member, then yes, they are potentially creating a public record. And so if someone asks for, I want to, I want to see all communications to councilor Taylor about the housing element, then this one would likely get picked up.
Okay.
Regardless of whether they send it to you in a personal email or, and the, the goal, of course, is to have them send it to you on your, on your town email.
Right.
And what folks sometimes, you know, sometimes people forget. And so they send it to your Gmail, but then when you reply, you can copy your, your town email.
Right, right. Great. Okay. Thank you. My list goes on, but it's enough for now.
Right. And all right. You've already answered a lot of my questions because there's a, you said it's Brown Act, PRA, and some other stuff, including social media, but there's also intellectual property. And do we handle ownership of IP? At least as to staff who are employees of the town, isn't it already covered? Or that's a question to follow up on. And if it is, great, then we have to figure out where the gap is. Because the more you have social media, the more you are going to care about the intellectual property or at least make sure you have the rights you need to be posting it. If that's the go. And I know this gets really complicated really quickly, but like that's just a, it sounds like you, you agree those might be areas to look into and that we don't have it all stowed up right now.
Yes.
Okay. That's fine. I'm looking at Saratoga's. I, I went through these and I just have some areas in each of them that maybe you have background on. And if you don't, I can comment on it separately. On the Saratoga one, on the second page, it says, council members shall not commingle email communication pertaining to city business with other stuff pertaining to personal life or business. So part of what I'm thinking is, okay, if somebody says, oh, and how's your sick dog doing? In the middle of all of this, obviously that isn't intended to be a violation here. Can you help me understand why there's a rule saying you shall not commingle it? I get the high level, but at the granular, this is a small town and people are going to know when you have a sick dog. Like, any thoughts on that?
Yeah. I, I think this is really just intended to, for your personal privacy. If someone emails you about town business, then also asks about your sick dog, and then you reply and explain all the vet bills, all this stuff. It, it, it could still end up being part of the public record because the, there was also part of the email that was about town business.
So it's more to protect, it's more to protect against the personal becoming public through an e-record request than to put, you know, me in trouble because someone's emailing me, right, about inappropriate. Okay.
Unless, unless you're San Jose. And then you would be using, you know, like a resource, but.
Yeah, exactly. Don't want to do that. In city business, is it, how does one think about that? I mean, is it matters that, you know, hey, you did this two years ago. Here's a ramification you should know about versus, like, it's something that's coming up. Like, is there a, a good understanding of what that means?
So I would say the Public Records Act is generally construed broadly by the courts. So the, it's an interesting, the, the San Jose case, it, the Supreme Court actually did give some examples of trying to draw a line between what's city business and what's not. And, you know, things like your, your dog's health and the things that are solely about your family are, are not city business. But even if something's happened in the past, if it involves city, then it is arguably a city business.
Okay. That, that just helps orient me. Then they have this electronic communication from the public to avoid Brown Act. It's got to be the mayor or his designated representative in consultation with staff to respond, which is a bit formal for a smaller town like ours. And I get the idea, and I think it kind of sort of works the way it is. Like, I think we all wait for somebody to say, I've got this. But I don't know, that, that, any context, like the mayor doesn't, do, does that mean the mayor have to say, Judith, respond to this one? Or, or, or would he have staff? Like, what's the designated representative?
Yeah. I just, I think you're talking about three, G, yeah, G or J?
G1.
Okay.
On page four of their policy.
I'm sorry, I was looking at J. So let me just look at this real quick.
Page forty-six, if that helps.
Yeah.
It's related.
Yeah.
Both of those topics are related.
So I'm, I'm going to speak actually to Jay first. I think that's what you're talking about. So that answers your question. So this is intended to address a situation where there's a lot of public comment on, say, Nextdoor. And the mayor or any, any council member, you know, sees it and thinks it'd be really helpful to have staff jump in there and two sentences clarify something. So this is intended to address that and, and give some direction to the council.
Okay.
Hey, could you please, you know, hop on there? You know, I, I don't know how much staff would do that on their own if, if, you know, some, some, you know, some staff, city staffs actually routinely monitor places like Nextdoor, but others don't. So that, that was, I think, the intent.
That, that helped me. The retention of email on page five, it says preliminary drafts, which It says preliminary draft, which I think we have been told to call things administrative draft or something. Notes is interesting. I, I guess it follows that are not retained by the city in ordinary course. Like, I thought notes were part of the eligible request. And so do you know, and if not, how this is supposed to be parsed? And if not, maybe in the future we can.
Yeah, I think that it is supposed to track the exception in the Public Records Act for administrative draft, which includes notes that are not retained in the ordinary course of business.
Not retained.
And those types of notes are not required to be affected. Whereas other notes might be retained in the ordinary business and so therefore would be required to be affected.
Okay, I got it. Going down, I don't have any other questions.
Can I ask one while you're looking? Because you're, you're going after some of the ones I had as well.
Yeah, okay.
On three D, there was a weird thing about council members communicating with another council member where you had to post it as information only. Well, I understand doing that, if you did it to all the council members or a, you know, a quorum, that made sense to me. But I didn't understand it if I sent to one other council member, because obviously we create a lot of subcommittee where I'm exchanging emails back and forth, and it's not for information, it's to have a discussion. So I found that section, given it wasn't council, it wasn't a quorum that you were communicating with, but was potentially one other council member. So did I misread that or do they have some really draconian, like, don't talk to the other council members?
Yeah, I mean, I think maybe they don't have a lot of subcommittees there. But I think that, yeah, this one maybe would be perhaps better written to exclude communications between some council subcommittee members. Or ad hoc subcommittees. Because sometimes, you know, if you have a standing subcommittee, then actually those are supposed to be at a noticed meeting. And so it would better be the one way only. But if it's an ad hoc subcommittee, then the two-way, you know, communication.
Do you run that by me? So if we have a subcommittee.
The council subcommittee.
Right.
If, if all you have are ad hoc subcommittees, then, I forget what I said. The standing, so, so some, some cities have standing subcommittees. And those are, you have continuing jurisdiction over a topic, like, I'll give an example. Some, some councils have standing finance subcommittees.
But would that have a quorum of council members on it?
No, it only have two.
Okay.
But they meet at noticed Brown Act meetings.
Okay.
Because they're standing as opposed to ad hoc.
Okay, thank you.
While we're, oh, excuse me. Do you guys mind while we're on that one if I just ask a follow-up for clarification? So the approach has always been, you didn't necessarily need to have a subcommittee, you had a Brown Act buddy by topic. And so I, I do want to clarify this D along those lines. So there are certain topics that I talk to different council members on, but I only talk to one council member per topic without it being an official subcommittee. So it seems, why would that be different from, you know, why wouldn't the, the verbal communication be consistent with the electronic communication there?
Yeah, I think I see what you're saying. I, again, I'm, I'm learning your, your, your structure, but standing, standing council subcommittees are formed by generally a resolution of the council. So they're, they're, they are quite formal and have set meeting times and continuing jurisdiction over a topic that is of continuing, you know, interest to the city, such as finance. I'm sure there are other ones that I think of, but that's, that's one that is pretty common with, with council, council that have, you know, I think fewer committees, fewer citizen committees and more council, council subcommittees. So I guess I am, I am not, I'm not concerned about the town's practice. In fact, I think the, the language about Brown Act buddies is actually even written into your texting policy. I saw it in there the other day. So I don't have any concerns about that. And, and, you know, it's, some of these policies, I'd say this, this, and this may be one of them where Saratoga decided to go above and beyond and be a bit more formal in, in how it does its communications.
Thank you.
San Jose's gets into a lot of security and management of data storage and things like that, that I'd be a little surprised apply to us. But I don't know, does anybody here know what our current security? I know we have a vendor that helps us with computer stuff, but like, if you, I don't know if you had a chance to look at this. Do we have the encryption that they're calling for and is this something that's super important for us? Like, it's hard to know how to, how to think about that. We're such a different scale than San Jose and I'm not surprised if it comes up anywhere, it comes up there. But do you have any contact?
Any thoughts about that? We as an outside consultant could do our IT as opposed to San Jose.
So through the vice mayor, we do have, like Catherine said, an outside consultant. And we do have any sort of baseline, like, security and network protections, but I would need to get back to you on the specifics of your question.
Yeah, and, and it's not important for tonight. And the, the last thing is philosophically, if the Brown Act covers something and we have a policy that does what the Brown Act does, I presume the value is a couple of different things. One is, we might get to the level of implementation that the Brown Act doesn't get to, so here's how to live with it in practice. We might also, you know, what, I'm trying to figure out the value of having a policy that overlaps with a high-level law. And it is a, a balance here. But how, do you have a framework for thinking about that piece of it? Because I think if you have, the more you try and elucidate what a general law means, I think you start running afoul of potentially of getting a local policy that's now disconnected if case law evolved into a different area. I don't know how to think about that. I'm not looking for the answer, but are those valid concerns? Or, or do people just make it work in practice by stopping at a certain level of granularity before they get too in the weeds that can get, lock you in on a path that the, the Brown Act evolves away from?
No, I think those are definitely valid concerns and I, like you, have concerns about stating the rule in two different places in two different ways. So I think that's a, a definitely valid concern. And I think as a, as a practical matter, yes, the Brown Act will continue to evolve. And it's hard for local government to keep up with state law as a general matter. We're always playing, always playing catch up. So, you know, to the extent that some of these policies spell out in a lot of detail and then the law evolves and as a practical matter, you just won't be able to, you know, implement that part of the policy and to update the policy because state law will prevail. And, you know, and that, and that, yeah, so there are opposing pawns as, as.
And, and I, I thought one of the other pros might be helping staff understand on something that's a little closer to home what we currently think of as a best practice or, or a way through a problem, even if it does have to change. I mean, is that actually practically helpful? And I assume it would be, but I don't know.
Yeah, and I'll, and I'll, I'll see if Cory or Jennifer want to add anything. But, but yeah, I, you know, the Brown Act is pages and pages long and there are treatises on it, they're pages and pages long. But it can be helpful to just have something that's short and sweet, that really drills down on what is, what is important to people.
So I, is that Judith, was that it for your questions?
Yep, that's it.
Thank you. I just, I just had one question and I'm, I'm just trying to make sure I'm understanding the distinction correctly for the moderated sites area. So AB, the, the difference between AB nine, nine ninety-two and what would be a policy that specifically then also calls out moderated sites? If you could just speak to those distinctions, I'm, I'm a little blurry on that.
Yeah, and that's fair because I think state law can be a little bit blurry on, on definitions as well. So AB nine ninety-two, I would say created sort of a, a clear rule, sort of a safe harbor for posts on social media sites that are public in the sense that they are not moderated. So if you think about a LinkedIn or a Facebook or an Instagram, you can, you can sign up for it without anyone approving you. And so when legislature drafted AB nine ninety-two, it focused on, it defines social media you know, a little bit more narrowly than, than the, the full range of social media sites out there. So Saratoga used, and Saratoga used that definition. Now, in terms of posts that are made on moderated sites, like next, like the Nextdoor, the PV Forum, those are not covered by AB nine ninety-two, but they are covered by traditional Brown Act principles. So then you defer to the Brown Act. And I would say the rules are pretty much the same. You, you should not post on somebody else, not comment on somebody else's posts, you should not like it, et cetera. But it is just not clear, clearly stated in, you know, in, in that provision of, of the Brown Act.
Got it, that's super helpful.
Yeah.
Thank you, yes.
And it's ironic, I mean, Facebook is certainly a moderated platform. They're using moderated in a weird way that it's, it's got a gatekeeper that allows you in. But after that, it's, they're both moderated platforms.
Well, the legislature, you know, they don't always get it right.
They don't understand tech, yeah.
All right, so is that for, it for questions? Should I, can I, we go to oral communications?
I'm seeing nodding heads, so yes.
Okay, great. Is there anybody that wishes to speak that's in the, the schoolhouse?
Yes, one hand's up.
Okay, why don't we start there?
Caroline Bruntongen, thank you so much. And I thank the town attorney for bringing this up, make it as simple as possible. And if we can have some oversight, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Anybody else in the schoolhouse?
No other hands.
No, okay, going to hands raised here, the first hand is Rita Comas. Rita?
Hi, thank you for taking my comments on this really important topic. It's interesting that San Jose has had a policy since nineteen ninety-seven. So for AB nine ninety-two, refers to social media platforms that are open to all persons that have access basically to a computer. And some of the examples that it gave, that was November twenty twenty. So the way that LinkedIn, you know, with the paywall, with the way that Facebook is, and so they're mentioned in that AB nine ninety-two. But, you know, most of those have changed. What is social media? The PV Forum is not a social media platform. Not only is it moderated and owned by a member of a town committee, but it's just not public. And all the members of the town are not part of it and not everyone has access to it. When council members are posting on this particular platform, they are also commenting to all of the council members since all of the council members are active on the PV Forum. Is it okay if they discuss a topic that will be coming up for vote for that committee, commission, council? And recognize themselves as a member of that body during the posting? For email correspondence for retention? If there was a liaison CC, you know, say for bicycle, it's, there's a, there's a fake alias. So perhaps PV can have an alias. So when someone's sending to a member of that particular group, it's also CC'd. So it makes it easy to store and retention, do retention. And for staff records, they should be retained. Some might have material and financial ramifications that might be important for a future ruling that protects the town and might not be relevant at this time. But I can think of some of the things from the past couple of years and, you know, financially and, you know, for town manager position for finance, that would be great and we really need those records to be retained. And how do we audit the record retention policy? Who's auditing it? Do we have a town process when we as citizens feel that there's a Brown Act violation? Who do we address this with? Because we haven't had anyone. Especially if we feel that decorum is compromised by public statements of our appointed or elected officials. You know, I, I have a suggestion of something we can do and I will send that in an email. I won't use my time for that. But really, if, you know, who do we contact? And if that question could be answered, that would probably save our town a, a lot of grief when something happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Um, Betsy Morgan.
Sarah, we lost you there at the end.
I think she was asking for Betsy.
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure she was back again before we continue.
Yes, I'm here. Betsy, we can hear you.
Thank you, thank you, mayor, a vice mayor and council members for the chance to weigh in on the important subject. I want to make a, a few observations about procedures for the receipt and distribution of emails specifically. And my goal is to make more clear to the public, to the volunteers, we all are, and, and the staff, what are our policies for effective and timely email delivery? Earlier this evening, Judith pointed out item G number one on, on page forty-six, the first sentence of which says e-communication from the public addressed to city council will be delivered, distributed promptly to each council member. And the same goes for the commissioners. So I was reflecting on the several firsthand experience, experiences that I've had. And the more numerous secondhand experiences that have truly shaken my confidence that email communications addressed to, those of you I just mentioned were being delivered in timely fashion that serves everyone and reduces the potential for mistakes that collectively dampens the quality of public engagement. As it stood over the past three years at least, delivering an email appears to require a staff member to read enough of the content of the email to make a judgment call. The staff's judgment is whether to deliver it promptly or put it in a folder for later delivery. So a topic, topic that staff determines is one, two, or three months out, someone needs, is going to decide whether to opt to hold it in a folder for later delivery. This has happened to me, I can speak with experience. If the email you've written though touches on more than one isolated issue, then staff has a hard decision to make. So it requires thoughtfulness and time, and that's not inconsiderable. We have a process that puts extra demands on our staff that we could avoid. On the other end, if your email is sent within a day of the deadline and staff is terrifically busy, there's a reasonable chance it won't make it into the package, nor will it be included in the next month's package because this decision was already made. So I, I, I see my time's running down. I'm going to cut to two requests. Because I, I don't think the public is being well enough served. I don't think any of us are being well enough served. So my two requests are, first, by recollection and pre-COVID in twenty eighteen, residents could drop by the town hall rather casually and find amongst several binders, one that included letters, physical letters that they could leaf through that had been received from the residents that week and the weeks before. If that still exists, that physical record of our emails, I'd be so glad to know it. Because it would serve as a double check for all of us. I think it would boost our confidence in the system that it was serving all of us. And for all of these reasons and with the software that's readily available to forward emails automatically, I just ask that the council take that kind of approach into consideration. Thank you for the extra time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Betsy. Next up is Rusty Day.
Thank you. Can you hear me? I just was unmuted. Thank you. Thank you for taking my comments. I have, I want to just frame some issues that I would love to see the council discuss and also our town attorney discuss. First of all, is this just a Brown Act compliance issue or is this a matter of good governance? I want to suggest to you that this is a policy of good governance and that while the Brown Act constrains you, it doesn't guide you in how to govern your affairs. And I'm going to point out why I think that's. And I'm going to point out why I think that's the case. If you look at social media and especially moderated sites, these are not public access sites. Access is controlled and it's limited, and therefore it's selective. And therefore communications do not reach the public. They reach some subset, selected subset of the public. Saratoga recognized that. And I commend Saratoga's policy to you to look at carefully. When the town attorney and council member Haskell discussed G1, they seem to think that that addressed social media and moderated sites. It doesn't. It very clearly addresses the town's website. It's talking about the town website and communications through the town website. Saratoga, when it comes to social media and internet, addresses that in section J, city participation in internet forums. And you'll notice Saratoga very wisely discourages town officials and elected representatives from engaging in internet forum. Now, why is that? Well, one reason is because, as I said, the public is not addressed through an internet forum. It's a selective audience, a self-selected audience that you reach. And so whatever communication you have is not publicly distributed. But more importantly, you have a first come, first served problem. What if council members start posting on social media like PV Forum? And other council members disagree or take issue with what a council member said? Are they prevented from responding? And then how do we limit that discussion? And how do we comply with the Brown Act? How do we avoid a serial meeting? It also raises real problems with records retention. Because as Los Gatos and San Jose point out, if you do engage in social media, you have to get all of the threads that that entails. Those are the public records that the town must retain under the Public Records Act and make available. Not just the one communication, but all of the responses and threads that it entails. The last thing I want to mention is, I just want to put in context where I think what I, what resonated with me with council member Huffty's first comment was there's a privacy concern about posting town meetings on YouTube. YouTube puts that media beyond the town's control. It's not on the town server. It's not subject to the town's control. And it boosts the distribution and publicizes that in a way that goes far beyond the legitimate needs of the town to communicate with residents. So you have a privacy issue.
I'm sorry, but I feel like we have to wrap it up just in fairness and consistency to others.
That's fair. So let me just finish with one sentence. Because of that privacy concern, it's not just a matter of notifying committee members and others. It's a matter of getting their consent to put them on YouTube. Thank you.
Thank you, Rusty. I don't see any other hands raised. Anybody else in the schoolhouse?
Oh, yes.
One hand's up in the schoolhouse.
Thank you.
Come up to Mike. Sorry. Yeah, I know. It's awkward.
Going by what Rusty kind of just said, is there a way that all these meetings can be posted on the town website rather than on YouTube? I mean, keep YouTube out of it completely and just have, we can go to our town website to see any past meetings and committees, meetings? Or is that not possible?
Thank you. Any, any other hands raised there in the schoolhouse?
Sorry, Caroline Vertonghen. I mean, where did they get it? They must get the contact through the recorded meetings. So I have no objection, but we were all surprised that the committee chairs did not know that YouTube posted those. So who gave the recording to YouTube? If nobody knows that YouTube did it.
Thank you, Carolyn. It doesn't look like we have any other hands up in the schoolhouse or on Zoom. So I will close oral communications and bring this back to council for discussion. Who would like to start?
I guess I've been nominated. Okay. So I really do appreciate the examples that you've given us. They are not mirror images of, of themselves. I can nitpick around the language in some areas where I have some concerns. And I can separately convey to you areas that if we go down a given route, certain language would need to be refined, but that's getting into the weeds. In general, I'm not somebody that likes to have a policy for the sake of restating a pretty clear law. So when we come to consider a policy, that'll be one aspect, but, but only one aspect among many that I'll be looking at it. I think helping people understand the obligations of a Byzantine law like the Brown Act is not a bad thing. And I think having working policies that we, if we do that, we're going to have to revisit them periodically to make sure they're up to date and best practice. But it's, it's worth it because getting into living with the Brown Act. It's hard. It's just hard, having been living with it for a long time, but much more formally for less than a year now. The meets and bounds of it, I always have a new question that comes up. So you're not going to come up with a policy that solves all my questions. But I think some of the basics that some of these other policies have outlined is good. I do think that it isn't as important to just focus on the PRA and the Brown Act. I do think there's an element of good governance. And, you know, I know that there's a subcommittee working on an ethics policy and some of this might overlap with those subjects. But it's not only about how do we comply with the Brown Act? It's about how do we get the public to have confidence that a discussion on an important topic is happening in real time in the public? And, and not being so many multitasked well. I personally have some sympathy with having a reasonably restrictive policy around email communications during meetings. Texting, I, I want to look at that text policy again. But to me, it's so important that the public feels like they're seeing the live discussion and understanding exactly the inputs to that decision that I would be supportive of, you know, reasonable, practical breadth. I mean, there obviously are emergencies. There's obviously technical issues. So I, I, I know there'll be some nuance to deal with there. But I, I think we need to look at it as a consistent, good governance practice as well as all the other things. I do think we've got to look at this also in terms of, you know, the more rules they have, the more there's liability. I don't want to increase liability of committee members, right? We want people to participate and feel comfortable that there's a reasonable flexibility that they have to do what's right for the town without worrying about getting in trouble for violating a given line. So it's simple. I think the more we can keep the rules a little higher level and a little simple would help that. And, and obviously a handbook session. We used to have the yearly sessions to educate people about the handbook as a resource. I think that could be very doable. I've always said it, and I'm a bit of a repeater on this point. I like old fashioned minutes. I, I don't like the fact that we rely on YouTube for a lot of reasons. They could change their policies and get rid of our, what is now the only comprehensive archive of our town's real live governance. And these agendas that, the, the minimal minutes that we have still confound me. So I will be sympathetic to having something that's less focused on YouTube and more focused on a more comprehensive minutes as the official record. And I do think we need to look at what is required for privacy and YouTube and all of that. But that's a separate legal project that would have to come along later. In terms of other comments, oh, the forum versus general. I'm not sure I see meaningful distinctions between a social policy and a forum. I, I think the same potential difficulties of good governance and Brown Act compliance exist on both. So it seems to make sense to me to, to have policies around both. So I'll stop there and hand it over to my colleague.
So you covered a lot of the topics that I was going to mention. I'd say generally, I like the idea of providing guidance. I felt like reading through some of the other towns' policies, some of them seem way too prescriptive to me. And other than, I, I think, I'm with Judith, I think, for the meeting, emailing and texting in the meeting. The stuff that Saratoga had, that actually read pretty well to me. It's like if you have a medical emergency, you step out and the rest of the time you pay attention. But then there was other things where, well, if you do X, then you have to do Y. And then you have to keep a record of Z. And that seemed to me like that was too much detail. So I'd be looking for something that provides general guidance so that people understand what's required without getting too prescriptive. And then I thought there were some interesting ideas mentioned tonight. You know, maybe we do create, you know, like a liaison email that you just, all you have to do is add it to your CC line and then all those things that go into the town email servers and they get recorded. And we don't have to worry about, well, you had to send them to the town council member and they had to remember to, you know, whatever. So it also buckets it nicely. So that actually, you know, I, I can, I can see doing something like that. So I definitely think we could go through these things and, and, and pick out some of the better guidance that's in here. A lot of the San Jose stuff seemed to me really old school. Like, now, don't you use that, you know, piece of computer? Like a computer is the super valuable thing and nobody has their own. You know, I mean, in the days when you were sitting in front of a $10,000 thing, maybe it made more sense. But that whole section seemed kind of flat to me. So, but I, I do think that we probably need more than just social media. I mean, I think there's room for guidance, you know, sort of across. So I can also do the same. I can send you some of the areas that I think the guidance would be interested, maybe trying to highlight those sections. But I, I don't think they need to be quite as elaborate as the policies that, that we read tonight.
Well, the idea of government. The idea of ethics and government is really important in this. I think that somehow underlining the idea that we communicate courteously, that we pay attention when people are talking, we do not make fun of people when they are talking. Somehow you've got to get that over, including you don't, you don't chain people in public. Either any, anybody. And if we could get that flavor, that would give us the governance part of the. I think the reason why we got into trouble with this was there was a sense that things were going on behind the backs of the public. And that was very uncomfortable for the public. And, you know, they were being called names, accused of wasting time, whatever. So those three, courtesy, respect and trustworthiness. I guess that's, that's like my key for what I need to do. I always loved the Saratoga stuff. I think it's great. It's simple, readable and needs to be simple and readable for us to get anything out of it. I have mentioned to everybody that I'm hoping that this will dovetail with our, we don't need to mention these three values if we actually have a code of conduct and ethics that includes these things. But it actually also happens with texting and social media and not posting people's things without their knowledge and all that kind of stuff that reflects respect, courtesy and trustworthiness. So that's, I guess, all I have to say, but congratulations for bringing this forward in a, in a positive way.
So Mary, I mean, it feels like the Code of Ethics or Conduct is the right place for that. Because you want verbal, you, you want that to be true in all communication. Whereas this is an email policy. So I, I agree with you. I think that it's the Code of Ethics is where we would put that stuff. That would basically in some way apply to email, but it also applies to council meetings and, and just talking to the public outside.
Well, I, I see it, these as all links that the committee handbook has to be part of the, the Code of Ethics. The email has to be part of it and the finance policies has to be part of the Code of Ethics. We're being entrusted with responsibility.
Okay, I think back to you, Sarah.
Yeah, I was going to say, Mary, are you, is it, are you done?
Oh, absolutely. I, I think it's very thorough. I know she can handle it.
Great. I, I, you know, it seems like there's a lot of consensus here. I agree with much of what has been said, so I'll just recap my thoughts. I also am supportive of a policy. I think I agree it's, it's good governance. And I think, just for clarity, for, you know, areas that are confusing and complicated, I think it would be helpful. I also, I agree with Judith's comments about the principle of not restating things that are in existing law. I like that thinking and so would want to take that approach as well. I also totally agree that, you know, as possible, would like to be the least restrictive with committees and not put even more cumbersome, you know, processes on, on our town volunteers in that way. And I also like the idea of a generic email for each committee to, to copy, to retain things that way. I absolutely agree, keeping things as simple as possible is key. And then in terms of the details, of course, agree with the use of town email. I agree with the Saratoga policy of no community, no electronic communications of any type other than, you know, family communications during meetings. And yeah, I'm comfortable also with the, the not, not calling out one social media type versus another. So just keeping that, that more broad. So I think that summarizes my comments. I think the YouTube question, absolutely, that keeps popping up. It needs to be addressed. We need to figure out, it's come up in the, the committee organization and restructuring conversations as well. And so, you know, I might suggest that, that we continue to solicit feedback from that group as well. And we need to, to be, continue working on that one. I don't know if it necessarily fits within this policy, but it's something that needs to be addressed. So Catherine, I don't know, we didn't really go through your questions one through five. But did this get you what you needed from this study session at this point? Is there anything we can clarify for, for you and/or other staff?
No, actually, I think you did pretty much cover all of my, all of my questions in your, in your comments. And you have quite a bit of consensus in terms of your direction. So that's very helpful. So I think I've got everything I need. I will take this back, coordinate with the clerk, clerk's office. And I, I've heard your comments on YouTube. Of course, I don't have a lot of background in that. So I'll work with staff on those questions as well, you know, in a separate track. But thank you so much for, for the discussion, for your direction and for the feedback from the community. It was very helpful.
Great. Thank you. All right. So we can move on to any discussions that we might want to have around council liaison committee or regional agency report. I know we had one submission in the packet. Are there any verbal reports that anybody would like to give?
I have one that's very relevant to this. From Race and Equity, we had a, a very good meeting yesterday. Provocative and as usual. But AI was brought is one of their things, artificial intelligence and using a robot to do the minutes and the quarters and from. to do the minutes and the quarter and from, from the recording and from the minutes that people take. And asked, when asked the question of what that has to do with equity, it, it, it gives people equity. It gives the public seekers equity because they then, their words become part of the text of the recording as our words are. And we, we, that becomes public record. So I, I thought it was a really interesting idea. They suggested that they would, could do a 30 minute free one with their next meeting. And in my infinite wisdom, I said, well, you guys are doing your minutes. If this works for you to do your minutes, let's see how it looks. So that's what, there's a, a, a called Otter. The app is called Otter and I guess, I don't know why it's called Otter, but there it is. And I thought it was an interesting idea. So I, that was the most relevant. Also, it gives you the opportunity to take, to have minutes taken when you're actually concentrating on something else. So that you don't have, worry taking, you know, people taking minutes who are supposed to be part of the conversation. And, and it gives people the ability to concentrate on one thing at a time, which is what actually works. Okay. So I think that, that might be that, that only one for that, for that. And you want me to do my next?
Well, you, you sent it, so you don't need to be read it. But I, I have one to add. So the EPC met. They have an evacuation plan that they've been working on. The committee approved it. Asked it to get forwarded on to the council. I'm working with the attorney to figure out sort of the next steps. It doesn't look like it's going to get on the August 9th meeting, but I hope that, you know, as quickly after that as we can get it on. Once we have the, the conversation with the town manager and the attorney, we can figure out kind of the next steps in terms of review and in getting in front of the council.
Thank you, Craig. Any other reports? If not, we can move on to the
I'd like to have some feedback on, on the AI idea.
Well, it's not agenda.
It's not agendized, so we really can't discuss it.
Well, on the agenda is this question of including Mary, how many subcommittee, each category, conservation committee included in the
But that's not on a, that's just your report of what they're doing. It's not on our agenda.
Okay, we don't discuss it.
I mean, unless the councilman had a question about what, what you, what you thought, you know, what they're doing. No, no, but what, you're reporting on their
Your report.
It's your report on their meeting. So it's a question of, do we have a question about your report? Not, do we have questions about the things that they're going to go investigate? I mean, we're getting, we're getting too far afield.
Sorry, and sorry to interrupt. I would just suggest perhaps you could discuss this idea with staff. I, I, I'm intrigued by the idea, but I think we could talk about it at a staff level.
Happy to connect offline, Mary. We'll reach out.
And Sarah, I would just add for this agenda item, you want to look for public comment. I'm not sure if you just
Thank you for the reminder. Thank you for the reminder. I do see one hand up. Rita.
Hi, I thank you for taking my comment. I just wonder if there is a cost associated with the Otter product? And my other comment is, you know, for, you can have something on a page on YouTube and have it private and then use the link on our town website. So it is not public on the YouTube channel. So people in whatever country can't see it, but people that go to the town website and hit the link, they are then able to see it. Just an idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Any other public comment on committee?
So we got one hand in the schoolhouse.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have to recall, I came to the town council March, May 24th. And I asked if, at least if the town liaison, town council liaison could be present at the BBTS. Both the Trails Committee and BBTS really needs the help of town council. So if the liaison can be present at our next meetings, that would be great.
I, I'm the liaison for the Trail.
Okay. So if you can be there now, because that would be great. Yeah, thank you. And we need you guys because we're behind on the traffic safety study and we thought that everything was kind of ready before the school and it's not. And so we need to speed it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline, is there anybody else with the hands up in the schoolhouse?
No, no more hands.
Thank you. And I don't see any other hands up on Zoom. So with that, I will move on to the town manager report. Howard.
Thank you. Just quickly, I had my monthly meeting with the Sequoias and Mary was there also. I also was invited by the fire department to, to their fire department pinning and promotion ceremony held on July 17th, which I planned to go to. And there's also just a quick reminder that there is a summer concert tomorrow evening at the town center. So that's all my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Howard. Any public comment on Howard's report?
No hands in the schoolhouse.
I have one comment.
And I don't see any on Zoom. Oh, thank you, Mary. On Howard's report?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that Betsy Ross has had, had her 103rd birthday on the 6th of July at the Sequoias and I went to visit her. And I couldn't keep, couldn't keep up with her. She was going from one party to the other and I couldn't even catch up with her. So we have quite a, quite a, a group at the Sequoias. It should be very proud of us.
Thank you, Mary. And with that, I believe I am happy to
We have one, a public comment from inside.
Oh, public comment on
This is on the town manager report?
This is on the town manager.
Just wondering if you could give us an update on the priory and proposal for the priory since it's, needs to be very public. Thank you.
Proposal from the priory, can you elaborate on the details on that?
It looks like they're going to build a very large gymnasium and we'll, and if you could tell us. So it's, it's proposed right now and I think the public just needs to know.
Howard, can I just just suggest you talk to her offline?
Yes, that's what I would recommend. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other hands in the schoolhouse?
No hands in the schoolhouse.
All right. And with, I still don't see any hands on Zoom. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Thank you. Good night, guys. Thank you all very much.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah.